Okay, I would like to call the June 27, 2024 Melville School District Board of Education meeting to order. If we could please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now I'm going to do roll call. Tori Velkey is not here. Scott Hugrich.
Present.
Patrick McElvee.
Present.
Jean Pretto is not here. Jeff Wolman.
Present.
Grace Wright.
Present.
And I'm Peggy Hassler. If I could please get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Submuted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Open period for patron comments. We do not have anyone signed up tonight. So next on the agenda is MSBA Governance Team Award Recognition.
Great, thank you.
Dr. Jeff Hogg.
So the Melville School Board was awarded and earned the Missouri School Boards Association 2024 Governance Team Award. The Melville Board received this award for their outstanding commitment to ongoing professional development in the areas such as student achievement, school, school law, and finance, board operations, and contemporary issues in education. The award also recognizes the Board's commitment to regional and statewide leadership and to have active participation in legislative advocacy for public schools and the students they serve. Four Board members achieved distinguished certification, and those four Board members, they achieved distinguished certification from Missouri School Boards: President Peggy Hassler, Secretary Patrick McElvee, Director Jean Pretto, and Director Jeff Wolman. To earn distinguished Board Member certification, Board members must achieve both advanced and master certification, earn at least 62 training credits, complete annual training, read a book related to school board service, observe board meetings of two other districts, and attend at least two MSBA regional and statewide events, and demonstrate leadership, advocacy, and presentation skills in a variety of related ideas to the school board service. Distinguished certification is the highest level of certification provided by MSBA. Again, thank you for your dedication. Thank you for what you do. Congratulations on earning that. We have a plaque. I'll give that to you now, Peggy, and then we can take a picture as a board next time.
Special thank you to Patrick for doing all the necessary paperwork to, for the Board to obtain the award. Jeff, did you have some?
Yep. And also, when I talk to MSBA, they actually said that they've never heard of, or at least can think of, a recent Board that has four members that are distinguished. So that shows the commitment we have to the community for advocacy for our students and our district.
Yes, and thank you for making your way to Branson this past week to accept all of our awards and represent Melville.
Happy to come home with a trophy full of hardware in my trunk.
All right. Congratulations, everybody. Next, we'll move on to five governance, a food service dashboard. Katie Gag.
Good evening. I am Katie Gag. I'm the Director of School Food and Nutrition, and I'm here to present the dashboards for School Food and Nutrition Department. So first, I want to start off with a couple proud items I have, or topics, I guess, with School Food and Nutrition. So we really take pride in customer service in our department. We're like the students' restaurant. You know, these students don't have to eat with us for the most part. So during the school year, before the school year, I'm constantly preaching positivity, smiles, upbeat environment. And so it shows, little acronym, I always talk about it, a welcome back meeting, SMILE, stands for school meals, improve learning experiences. So we have an amazing workforce in our department that, one of their main focuses is to make sure they have a pleasurable dining experience, why with us. So kudos to the staff for always bringing their best. And another thing I'm extremely proud of are our health inspection scores. So as you look at those, you see numerous hundreds. I think our lowest score was a 98, and I do want to point out, none of the points that were taken off have anything to do with food. It might be a cracked tile, a dirty fan, maybe a cracked basket. So kudos to the staff for keeping food safety, sanitation, and other top priorities. So once again, amazing workforce. So just in general, the school meals program is a federal program. We are self-funded, so the funds we, revenue we generate must stay within the school food department. Here's some data. I'm happy to report, even though it says six part-time openings, that is slimmed down. We've, I've passed on a couple of new hires to HR recently, but, so we only have probably two that we're looking for for next year. We have nine substitutes. In general, for the depart, or excuse me, the district, we were about 29% this past school year of free and reduced, families that qualify for free and reduced price meals. Like I mentioned, the St. Louis County health inspections are done, we do it twice a year, one in each semester, with amazing results, as I shared. Since we're a federal program, we do receive an audit every five years and got an audit this coming school year. So we'll be looking forward to that. We also have a procurement audit that's required every six years, so that'll be the following year. And we do store about 750 cases of frozen commodity products offsite. We don't have a space big enough here within the district to store all of our products. Here's our meal participation data. Without meal participation, we don't have a program. One thing I want to highlight is that, or make a point to show you, that 21-22, all students ate for free. So we had much larger participation at that time, but these past two years were pretty consistent, which those numbers do go back to where we were prior to COVID. But as you can see, we are growing in breakfast, which is the next presentation I'll talk to you about. But we're striving to really encourage our students to come in and enjoy breakfast with us. These are the federal reimbursement rates that we have received this past school year. The federal reimbursement rates for next school year will probably be published in July, late July, hoping they will go up a little bit, because as you guys know, when you go to the grocery store, food cost has gone up. So that is just typically, this is where we were this past school year. Here's our financials. So this revenue as is of, is as of May 31st, the end of May. So as you see, our general, our overall revenue for this past school year was one point, or 5.1 million, with that comes the expenses. So with our expenses, we came in at 5 million. This does not include capital, which that is on this next slide. As I mentioned before, school food is self-funded. All the, all the funds remain within school food, but then we have 17 kitchens. As you guys know, you have to replace your equipment every so often in your own home. So I have a good equipment replacement plan. With having a decent fund balance, we've been able to do a lot of great things these past few years. So this year, current school year, we spent about 657,000. We put back into our schools for improvements from just replacing equipment to improving the aesthetics. So with the capital taken out, that's a change in fund balance. So we ended, we ended the year, well, it's just a little different than that because we had a month of June to go through, but our fund balance at the end of May was 3.5 million. So here's the capital equipment improvements we complete, or are completing still, I guess, in the middle of the summer. Everything is rocking and rolling with the walk-ins, the dish machines, and a few other items to all improve the functioning of the kitchens and ease the kitchen. So we are installing a coffee bar at Oakville Senior this summer, which will match what we did here at Melville High School this, this summer prior. So it was a huge hit with the students, and the students at Oakville are extremely excited. When we've been over there planning, they come up, wonder what's going on, and they've seen all the social media that Melville pushed out about theirs, and they're very excited to have one as well. So this is what we're planning for next summer. So continuing to replace some walk-ins, some dish machines, some coffee evens, and some merchandisers with a total of about 527,000, and that could change, but that's currently what's on our, our plan for next summer. So how do I evaluate the program? Like I mentioned before, you don't have students that come in and eat with you. You don't have a program. So good meal participation shows we're doing a good job. Obviously, audit results, inspection scores. And I'm constantly out talking to the students. Like I said, they're our customers. I want to get their feedback, what they want to see coming in, what food options. We do lots of taste tests. Some of the stuff they ask for is unfortunately out of the means of our possibilities with all the school federal guidelines we have, but we try to do whatever we can to meet the needs of what they're asking for, and obviously program fund balance. Looking at next school year, some challenges. We just want to continue to encourage as many families to complete that free and reduced application. It was a challenge coming out of COVID when all meals were free for a couple of years. Getting families back into getting that application completed. Like I mentioned before, we're continuing to see rising food costs, and we have some more restrictive nutrition standards that are going to hit the program come 25, 26 school year. Strengths, an amazing workforce, like I've mentioned before. Maybe hadn't had an opportunity to step in one of our kitchens and meet some of our staff. They truly are, have hearts of gold. Very supportive network amongst other directors within this, the St. Louis area, or with the state of Missouri, or even across, across the river with Illinois. I network them, I network with them often. Cannot say enough how great our health inspection scores are and our continued focus on customer service. That is school food in a nutshell. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
I just have one thing to add. I've already told Ms. Gag this, but my nephew recently moved to a nearby school district neighboring and had told me that the food here was much, much better than where he is. And I told him why, and he wants me to go talk to his board with him to see if they can do the same thing. So thank you.
I love, I love hearing stories like that. Yeah. So we, like I said, they're our customers. So trying to meet what they get outside of school, like I said, but still meeting those federal guidelines, we do whatever we can. So thank you for sharing that.
Well, we appreciate that, and my kids too. So they rarely, rarely ever brought their, their lunches to school. So.
Okay. Well, thank you. It's the crew. I just get to chat with you. They, they make it happen every day, really.
Yeah. And so there are some questions on e-boards that members ask, and actually, they're, the responses are very interesting to me. So for the community, if they're interested in learning more about what some of the limitations are that the government puts on us and the food supplies, or the food, salt, sugar content, that's, I think that's very interesting. It's, it's a good trend to move towards, but I'm sure it's pretty hard.
Especially with high schoolers that their palate already know what sodium tastes like, sugar tastes like.
Yeah.
And like I was telling Mr. Felton earlier, you, some foods need salt to make it palatable. Like cheese, you, you need salt to make the cheese. And so when we get so restrictive, we're really messing with the quality of the product. So we'll do what we can.
Yes. But thank you, and thank you to your staff also, because they are amazing.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is Universal Free Breakfast Program at Beasley, Beerbaum, and Forter. Katie Gag.
And I'm Katie Gag. I'm Director of School Food and Nutrition. I'm here to present a recommendation for a universal free breakfast program at Beasley, Beerbaum, and Forter Elementary Schools. So what is a universal free breakfast program? Breakfast is offered free to all students at no cost. We still claim the students at their designated paid categories. So a full pay student will still claim for meal reimbursement at that paid category rate, reduced, and then free. In order to be a successful program, we need to have about 45% or more of the students at that school qualify for free reduced price meals. We did start the programs at all three schools, Beasley, Beerbaum, and Forter, on Halloween, October 31st of '22. Meal participation increased at all three schools and at all three paid categories as well. So as you can see by this, so 21-22, as a reminder, all students ate free due to the waivers set forth by the federal government. The next bar graphs showing when we went back to charging students for breakfast. The next one is when we switched over, October 31st, '22, on how the participation grew at all three schools, and it continued this past school year. So here's where we were at with free and reduced meal percentages for students who qualified at the three schools. I know Forter has dipped a little bit. I've already had conversation with Dr. Moss on how we could get a campaign going to really encourage her families to get that free and reduced meal application filled out to where we could get her numbers up. But I feel confident after our conversation with her, and they're close, so I feel like we could get there and still have a successful program with those numbers. The financial impact, like I mentioned, we still claim them at their designated paid categories. I mentioned before, the 24-25 federal reimbursement rates have not been published yet. Those were the, the full pay, the reduced and free meal reimbursements for this past school year. But with an increase in participation across the board at all categories, the federal meal reimbursement will cover the costs for the program. So with that, I recommend we continue offering the universal free breakfast program at Beasley, Beerbaum, and Forter for the upcoming 24-25 school year. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I just want to say that there's a lot of things that the district does that I'm very proud of, and this is near the top of the list. To think that we can provide free breakfast to communities with high, with students with a high percentage of free and reduced lunch population, I think is just wonderful. I think it's, not only do I think we really want to care for communities like that, but I would have to imagine that from an academic standpoint, those students perform better if they're nourished in the morning. So I just think this is a, a great win, and I thank everybody for so diligently making it happen. Thank you.
Thanks also goes out to the teachers, because I know they've had accommodate, obviously a whole school camp fit in the cafeteria at the same time. Everybody eat breakfast at the same time. So a lot of kids bring the breakfast into the classroom, and I know that could be just some messes or more trash, but I thank the teachers for being flexible to do what's right for the students, like you mentioned.
I'm sure that balances out with kids that aren't worried about being hungry in the, in the morning and having their concentration falter. So I'm sure that's a small price they pay to have better concentration and better attendance on the lesson at hand.
Most definitely. And sometimes the students, if they don't eat all, they, they keep it for a snack. Like they might not have had a snack sent from home, so they utilize that, that dry cereal or whatever they got for breakfast for their snack during the afternoon, too.
Okay. If I could please get a motion to approve the universal free breakfast program at Beasley, Beerbaum, and Forter Elementary Schools for the 24-25 school year.
Submoved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, thank you, Katie. Next up is District Wellness Program. Katie Gag again.
Thank you. I'm Katie Gag. I'm Director of School Food and Nutrition Services, and I'm here to present on the district's wellness program. It is required that districts participating in the National School Lunch, School Lunch and Breakfast Program have a district wellness policy in place by a couple of different acts, but more recently, the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of 2010. So there is a few policy requirements, as you could see there, the content for specific goals on nutrition promotion and education, physical activity, and other school-based, excuse me, other school-based activities. Like I've mentioned before, there are standards and nutrition guidelines for all food and beverages sold to students on campus during the school day. And according to the government, the school day starts at midnight and goes to 30 minutes after the last bell. And then also too, not even just food sold to students, but food provided to students during the school day are also have to follow these nutrition standards. And there has to be some policies for food and beverage marketing on campuses. Part of the policy is that building assessments need to be conducted every three years by the schools. And there is a wellness committee that we have that we've met. I'll be honest, this was the first year out of COVID that we've come back together. It was good to, to have conversations again and revisit our wellness plan and policy. But we have stakeholders from different arenas that participate on the committee. And kind of going back to the building self-assessments, the, the principals and their nurses and other building personnel did complete that, building self-assessment this spring, and it is available to the public along with the policy and the goals on the district website. So the building assessment directly ties to the policy components and goals, and those goals are nutrition guidelines, nutrition promotion and education, physical education and physical activity, and other school-based activities. Like I mentioned, it must be completed at least every three years, and we did have the buildings complete them this past spring, and the results are on the website. So with the results, and I combed through all the different assessments that they did, these are some areas that the committee needs to focus on for next school year. Overall, just the awareness of the policy, all the way down to the teacher level, the bus drivers, and it mainly ties in with the food provided to students during the school day that we really need to work on, mainly being non-food reward ideas for teachers. I need to work with some principals and get them some ideas, or they're going to start including that in some of their welcome back meetings as well. There are some conversations with elementary principals about having recess before lunch as opposed, that's what they're doing currently out of COVID. Per the procedures, they recommend in having recess before lunch, then coming in and having lunch, because students eat better. But after COVID, coming out of COVID, we wanted kids to wash their hands properly, so we switched from going to lunch before recess. And some of the principals really like it better due to potentially discipline issues that occur while they're out on the recess outside. Then the teacher, they go right back to their teachers, and they can handle those discipline issues as opposed to the cafe recess aids that don't, haven't really had training or, or not as equipped as the teachers to handle that. So having conversations with them on that. Few things with physical activity and education, we just need to work on ways to increase some physical activity throughout the school day, and maybe get some more before and after school ideas on how to increase physical activity, mainly at the elementary level. And as far as other school-based activities, maybe working with the, the buildings on doing some step-level challenges with, with staff, because in the policy, or in procedures recommend with the goals as well, getting staff involved and getting them physical, physically active. So those are some areas of focus that, that the committee, like I said, is going to be charged with next year to help support the schools moving forward, trying to improve wellness as a whole. Do you have any questions about our wellness?
It's funny how you bring up the conversation about lunch and recess and then recess and lunch, because I'm the rep for the wellness committee from the Board.
Yes.
And I remember that conversation the most vividly of any of the conversations that were had in any of those committee meetings, because it was amazing to hear the, some of the principals say, oh yeah, you know, we should do recess and then lunch because it gives the students time to wind down after recess. And then the flip argument automatically happened of, well, you know, you have them have lunch, and then it gets them to run off some energy before they go back to class. And it was fascinating to hear the back and forth on that point of which one makes more sense, and to hear the principals have different opinions on it. And it was, that was fascinating.
Yeah, definitely. And I don't, I don't think there's one cookie, cookie cutter answer for all schools.
Yeah, they had compelling arguments on both sides of that decision, and that was what made it fascinating, is they both had, you know, both camps in that decision had great arguments, and they were trying to figure out which worked best for them, and it came down to the which works best for that school, and that's how they did it.
Yep, most definitely.
I look forward to further conversations on that topic, in fact.
Yes.
All right. And thank you.
Thank you.
You know, health and wellness to me is a big part of academics. I mean, so many people don't really understand how bad commercialized foods are, are you. And so teaching, you know, even if this gets passed on to the kids.
Right.
So that they understand all those processed foods and what they're doing to our society. I'm kind of a freak about it, so.
And even just moving around a little bit, kind of having a brain break and doing a little exercise and come back, then you, you're a little more focused.
Yeah, making people more aware.
Yeah.
Whether they're adults or children, that, how important it is.
I'm sure once the coffee bar goes in at OHS, the, the activity level will go up there just a little bit.
Yeah. But thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. All right. Moving on to Troutwine Prop S Security Entrance, Mike Gag.
Good evening, Board of Education. I'm Mike Gag, Director of Facilities. I'm here tonight to present on the new security entrance for Troutwine Elementary. The scope of this project includes renovation of the existing main office, art classroom, nurse's clinic, and teacher's workroom, also the addition of two new security entrances. Also the addition of two new security entrances. This project will be paid for through the facility's Prop S capital budget. With that said, I would like to move to approve the lowest qualified bid submitted by Aspire Construction Services in the amount of $1,390,110, which includes professional contingency and all of the fees. With that said, I'll answer any questions you may have. Also want to iterate that this will be Aspire's eighth project that they've done for us if we approve it tonight. So they have done phenomenal work for us, so a great company to work for.
I mean, if they're on number eight, they're doing something right from one to seven to make sure we're still a satisfied customer. So it's obviously that they get this much business because they're doing a fantastic job.
They're doing fantastic work. I think Dr. Hogg and Dr. DeCunfor would agree with me.
That's excellent news.
All right. If I can please get a motion to approve the lowest qualified bid by Aspire Construction Services?
Sumut.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay, next up, Pool Concrete Structure Change Order Number Two.
Good evening again. My name is Mike Gegg, Director of Facilities. I'm here tonight to present on the Pool Concrete Structure Change Order. The scope of this change order includes repair and replacement of degraded concrete throughout the pool building. This repair would also include some mechanical and electrical removal and replacement work. This project will be paid through, through the facility's capital budget. I would like to move, move to approve the Change Order Number Two submitted by Integra Facility Service in the amount of $492,442, which includes base bid, options one through five, and all contingency fees. With that said, I'll answer any questions you may have on this.
I appreciate the question that was posted on e-boards about why it's best to have them continue on that, because since the pool is such a use and having it essentially start from ground zero with a new contractor, it seems like both a waste of time and a waste of money. But this was literally just something they just stumbled across in doing their inspection?
Yes, as they started, you can see some of the work they chiseled out already, and there's some places where it just got, as they got into it deeper and deeper, it got softer and softer.
And this is just unique to the pool building because of, since the pool's there and obviously a lot of moisture?
Of the chlorine, the moisture. That's a 50, almost a 52-year-old pool, so.
That would explain.
Eighty-two years? Is that really how old it is, 82? Wow.
Yeah, it was opened in 73.
Tack that at the bottom of the list of capital projects as new pool.
There's, the plaque is still in there from, they passed a bond issue just for the pool, and the plaque is very rusted, but as you walk in, it's still to the left. You can see the volunteers from the committee who ran Prop Pool back in the 70s.
All right. If I could please get a motion to approve the Change Order Number Two submitted by Integrated Facility Services for $492,442, which includes base bid, options one through five, and a contingency fees.
Sumut.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay. Next up is Prop S Update, Mike Gegg.
Again, my name is Mike Gegg, Director of Facilities. I'm here tonight to present on Prop S Update. So here's all the projects we have completed so far since the start of Prop S. So Beerbaum Elementary Phase Two is going very well. They're in the structural steel, which started a few weeks back, and they got about two, three, three more weeks to complete the steel structure, and then they'll start the decking on the floor, main, on the first floor, and also the decking on the, on the roof. So it's really starting to take shape. You can kind of, you can say, see how large this facility is going to add to the Beerbaum Elementary. Also the sprinkler piping that's going on, really got to give a shout out to Jeff Wunder for working with us on the sprinkler piping this summer with summer school going on. He's been a great help, trying to make this schedule work and moving classrooms around, and he's done a great job with that. And I believe there should be no problem we get the sprinkler piping done before school starts, so got to give Jeff a shout out. He did a great job helping us out, so. Point Elementary, we're, handrail, I did talk to our handrail fabricator. They're actually going to start, then install a handrail tomorrow, so that'll be completed. And we're still waiting on the, we did get some feedback from our architects on the fire-rated doors we're waiting on from the company, and it looks like they, we kind of put a lot of fire under them, and they bumped, they did bump us back till mid-August. Now we're looking at hopefully August 1st to get this shipped to us and installed, so. Cross our fingers we get that put in before school starts. So I think we're looking pretty good, though. Forter Elementary, as you can see, it's taking shape. We did get some fire, the fire-rated glass dick coming this week. It is installed, so that, that digged, delivered and installed. We're just waiting for the storefront itself to come in, in the next week or two. And once that's in, then they can start laying the carpet and doing the finish, finishing touches. Beasley Elementary, pretty much the same way. The fire-rated doors and glass went in this week on Wednesday, or actually Tuesday, and it's starting to take shape. We're just waiting for the storefront to come in, and then we will get carpet, flooring, our flooring and go base up and finishing touches, and that should be completed on time. Burke Middle as well is going good. Fire-rated glass is scheduled to be in July 15th. Everything's looking good there. Some of these pictures were taken last week, so a lot more work has taken place since these pictures have been taken. And actually, drywall's been going up and on some locations, and it's all, all starting to take shape. Oakville Middle, same way. As you look at this picture, all the, all the studs have been put up. There is drywall starting tomorrow, so it's starting to take shape as well, and it's, it's on schedule as well. And same as Woolwind. As you can see, the, they removed all the old concrete. The concrete is complete. That is, they finished that, I believe, earlier this week. But the concrete is done. They're inside doing the stud work, studs, and then drywall is scheduled for Friday, late tomorrow or Monday to start. Mosaic, again, there's studs, this picture was taken last week, so they have studs. And again, drywall will start next week, and it's starting to take shape. Starting soon, Washington Middle, they actually started demo a couple of days ago. Still waiting on a permit. We should get that here hopefully on this week or next, but they can definitely start on the demo, which I've done. And I believe we're in good, good shape on that one. Prop S Schedule Outlook, Troutline, that you approved tonight. We'll get that started sometime in July. And then Mosaic Elementary Phase Two, the elevators, we'll get that bid out in September, and we'll get that construction started summer of 2025. The reason we're bidding that out early is to, there's about a, about a nine to 10 monthly time on the elevator parts, or the, all the elevators, parts that are included for the elevator. So we'll get that on order, and then they can start the shaft next, two of the schools out, and then all the parts and supplies will be here ready to go in once the, once the towers are built. There's our financials. Thank you, Marsha, for those. With that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
So if the elevators have a nine to 10-month lead time, I'm assuming the vendor will hold on to them until they're actually ready to start doing the work?
I think they'll probably come in probably around June, June or maybe even July.
And that's another project that has to be done, obviously, right before school starts.
That is a summer project, correct.
I'm assuming that if we bid that out, we're going to have contingencies in there just in case for that.
Correct, correct.
That's a, I, I know how much work that's going to be inside a mosaic, and there's no way class will work any kind of close to efficiency with that going on.
You are correct.
I'm very, I'm curious to see how that's going to look and what the cost of that one's going to be, because that's a building that definitely needs elevators, without question.
Yes. It's an older building, but yeah, definitely needs, yeah, this improvement.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Mike.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Next is six action items by consent, A through J. If I could please get a motion to approve action items A through J?
Sumut.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay. And if I could, good, we don't have anybody signed up for open period for patron comments on non-agenda items, so if, Patrick, if you could put us into closed session?
Motion to enter closed session meeting for the purpose of reading of minutes of previous meetings and corrections and approval of same and other items under Missouri Revised Statute 610.021 subsections 1 through 21, and 610.022 subsections 1 through 6. Hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting particular employees, section 610.0213, and individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employment or applications for employment, section 610.02113. Legal action, causes of action, or litigation, section 610.0211.
Scott?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes.
Peggy, yes. Okay, if I could please get a motion to adjourn?
Sumut.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.